Okay, I'll call this village board meeting for August 6, 2018 to order. Roll call, please.
Joe Zitzelsberger.
Here.
Sam Bowick. Sue Springman. Bill Ranham.
Here.
Chris Selner.
Here.
Phil Williams.
Here.
Aaron Moran.
Okay, so first we've got our confirmation of the open meeting compliance.
Yes, I hope this never happens to any of you, but I was so proud of myself for noticing the public hearings ahead of time that I put it away and I forgot. So, I thought I hadn't done it. So, my apologies to the doggy daycare and to the Andries because I forgot that I had noticed it and that I made a mistake on the Andries. So, the Andries item will be holding open. The doggy daycare was noticed, so we're able to take action on that, but that's all I need. So sorry. Otherwise, we're all good.
Okay. Very good. All right, next we have consent agenda. Is there anything that would, anyone would like pulled or look for a motion?
I would move approval of the consent agenda.
Motion by Phil Williams, second by Bill Ranham. Any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. All the comments, is there anyone here that would like to address the board on an issue that's not on the agenda for this evening? I will say that that's long enough. Todd, any comments today? For you?
I would note, we had a good experience this past, Adam, was Monday last week when we had, or it was a Tuesday, we had a class here from UW Madison looking at creative placemaking around the state. They chose to spend one of their full class days here in Wanakee, here from nine o'clock until about five or six. Adam and I gave them a tour of the village, a walking tour of downtown, and they kind of studied the state of our village and what's happened and what could happen. So, it was neat that they took interest in our community and it was a good experience for them and us.
Super. Thank you. All right, then we'll move on. First item is reports, TID update. Renee, is that going to be you?
Yeah, that's me. So, I just wanted to provide the board with a brief summary of what took place at the joint review board meeting on July 19th. You may recall that there is now a requirement, the joint review board meets annually to discuss the status of the TIDS. And so, Ellers came and did a presentation on each of them, and so I kind of summarized those and I wanted to just hit some of the highlights there and then talk about, a little bit more about some of our TIDS that are getting closer to the end of their lives and kind of what that could mean for the village financially and with regards to the levy limits. So, I'm just going to kind of start with the individual TID districts and some of it'll, I'll give more explanation on the first ones so you understand some of what I'm talking about.
Renee, I'm sorry, is this something we can put up on the board or no?
Um...
Todd, is it, do you have it too?
It's in the packet on page 40.
I've given, I mean, we all have it, I just...
Yeah, I could, we could, yeah, we could bring it up. I would note too that a lot of Renee's comments are going to summarize what was reviewed in greater detail at the joint review board. And that meeting is on the village's YouTube channel in its entirety, so people can find that there and watch it.
Correct.
See, you got it, okay.
Okay, that should be coming up pretty quick here.
Thank you.
So, the first TID district that we have open is TID number two, and that one, the expenditure period for that ended March 20th of this year, so there are no more project costs that can be expended out of that TID. Based on the cash flow projections by Ellers, this one would close in 2023, which is the mandatory statutory time limit for that one. We'll talk a little later about, because TID number two is doing increment sharing with TID number five, and so I did run some numbers if we did some, you know, if we didn't keep TID two open till the mandatory end of its life for the sharing purposes, you know, what that would mean for TID five. So, we'll talk a little bit more about that, but the assumptions that we made were that this one would stay open till the mandatory end of its life to continue its increment sharing. Oh, I have a typo on there. It's increment sharing with TID number five. Obviously, it's not sharing increment with itself. So, one thing that, a question had come up, when a TID district does close, what does that mean for the levy limits? And so, I sought out Mike Harrigan from Ellers, his counsel on that, and so the state has a formula, and so you take the value, the increment value as of one, one of the year that the TID district closes, and so say that's 12 million, and then you divide that by the value of the entire Village of Wanakee, not including any of the TIF districts, and you get a percentage. So, for TID two, for example, I'm estimating it's going to be .77 percent of the whole value of the village. Then you can, then you take 50 percent of that, and that's the amount, so you get half of that, I'm not saying this very well, it's a very confusing formula. So, say your levy for the village is $10 million, you take the percentage that that TID district is going back into the village, and then half of that is what you can increase your levy by. So, in TID two's case, we'd be able to bump our levy up by about 39,000, and then the other half basically goes to tax relief for the whole remainder of the village. You can't take all of that increment going back on the tax roll and increase your levy by that. So, again, it's a very formula-driven thing that only happens in the year that you close it, so I've made some assumptions on, you know, what the values are going to be in the year of closure and what our levy might be around that time, because these are like five years into the future, so. So, anyway, it's not a huge bump, at least for TID two, that we will see in the, in our capacity to levy, whether we need to use it or not. Does that make some sense?
Do you guys all know what TID two is? Probably not. That's the second business park, correct? The one with D and R Denble in...
DNS.
DNS, I'm sorry, thank you.
Arboretum Office.
Yeah, Arboretum Office. Park. So, like I said, we'll, when we, after we get through these, we'll talk a little bit more about how the increment sharing, if that got altered, what that would mean to the, to the different TIF districts. So, the rest of them should go a little faster, because I'm not going to go through that whole formula thing again, which I kind of botched up anyway, but needless to say, you take the value of that increment divided by the whole value of the village, and you get to just absorb 50 percent of that into your levy limit. Okay. TID three, it two has reached the end of its expenditure period back on June 5th, and so there will be no more new costs in that TID district. Anything that was, you know, debt will continue to be paid, and anything that was already encumbered by that time, I'll say, will still happen, but nothing new.
And TID three is the business park where Madracks and Tormack and Octopi are located.
Right. So, again, with Ellers' cash flow projections, this one is also expected to go out to its mandatory end of its life, which is 2023. And in this case, this one has a bit more incremental value, so we could, you know, again with my estimates, increase our levy by about 109,000, which is, again, 50 percent of that formula I discussed. TID number four, that is the Village Center and the...
Canary Row.
Yeah, Canary Row, the former Stokely site, and so that, you know, that expenditure period does go out a few more years, but currently there is nothing, nothing new happening there, we're just collecting the increment, and based on the current cash flow projections, that would close eight years early in 2022. And again, that one has a pretty small incremental value as well, and so that might be perhaps 15,000 that we could increase our levy by. Do you want to move it up slightly? Thank you, Todd. TIF district number five, that's the original downtown district, and that is the one that is receiving the sharing from TID number two. And based on the projections, meaning that TID two would continue to share through the end of its life, that one would close in 2026 or six years early, and could, we could estimate that we'd increase our levy, but could do that by 65,000. And we'll talk, again, more about the sharing in a minute. TIF district number six is a relatively new district, and so the projections that Ellers did basically were, if nothing further were to happen, which isn't a realistic case necessarily, but it would still close one year early. There's already enough into district number six for it to meet its, meet all of its obligations by 2035. And that was too far out into the future, I didn't worry about how that might affect the levy limits. And then, TID district number seven, oh, sorry, six is Kill Kenny. TID district number seven is Renew Air, and this one, we found out, or Mike Harrigan discovered at the meeting that he had an error in his cash flow projections, so after the new values come out on August 15th, he's going to rerun that to see when the actual projected closure would be. But it's definitely before the end of its mandatory life.
A couple of quick anecdotal pieces on here. TID six, the Kill Kenny Farms item, while this, remember, this process involves taking the current snapshot of the district's condition. It doesn't anticipate expected value additions in how it looks at the TID closure. TID six is a good example where this analysis is really quite deceiving, because the activity in the district is certainly very real and very, and happening immediately, immediately and will be the next, the next many years. So, that one-year early scenario is very, very exaggerated. It's, I don't, we could look at the original project plan, but I believe this district was closing easily 10 years prior to expected closure if values were achieved as we expected. So, just a reminder on that, and then I would also note that TID five are, this is really pleasing to see for the downtown district to be closing six years early. Chris and Phil, you were on the board, and then staff as well know what the picture of this was post-recession, where we did, we did not expect, the projection was that we would have a remaining balance that would have to be covered by the general, the general fund, the general taxpayer. The district was going to fail in its obligation, but the work that's been accomplished, summit, the summit development and thereon, has led to this coming around in a really positive way. So, that's a success, a success story as I see it for a downtown district, which is typically challenging, as was this one.
And I didn't put anything on here for eight and nine, since they were created this year, there actually was, were no reports prepared and there was no filing due for those. They will be, next July 1st, I will have to do their first filings. So, anyway, that's why they weren't included, not that we don't have those two. So, here is where it's a little hard to read the way that the packet printed over my things, but this is the TID sharing between FOT from two to five, and so this slide represents the, the current cash flows that Ellers had prepared in their joint review board reports, and this anticipates TID two sharing all the way till the end of its life. So, that second column, transfer from TID two, that is going to TID five to support, you know, bringing that out of its deficit that it has had. So, this is where it's calculated to close in 2026, six years early. So, the next slide is, is I think what more people might be interested in, in the different scenarios that I ran. So, the first scenario is, you know, what if we only shared for three of the remaining possible six years of sharing? You know, what would that do to the closure for TID number five? And so, and again, these are estimates, they're, you know, estimated increments and that type of thing, and the aids, and, but it would push it back about two years to 2028, but still closing, you know, four years early. So, that's, you know, still, again, a really positive outcome, you know, if we chose to only share for three more years.
One thing the numbers don't indicate is the value gained on projects that have been accomplished this year in TID two, the Bright Star Senior Living at the corner of Arboretum and Quinn. That's going to be valued, a value addition, along with the Trowbridge Group project that was developed around the corner on Quinn. Those are newly added values that are going to push up this, this transfer capacity.
Correct.
Sorry.
And then, then I ran one, you know, what if we just did it for this one last year? And it would still, it would still be able to close early in 2029. I don't necessarily recommend this scenario, just because, again, there's a lot of estimates involved and there's still many years to go. You know, we might want to just see, get more values in there, see where this is at, just to ensure that, that we can meet all the obligations in TID number five, but it shows that, you know, TID two has been, you know, super helpful to TID number five, but, you know, it's getting to where it's close to standing on its own to, to make it through the end. So, you know, again, this is just something we, we can think about as we're working on things. You know, we either get all, you know, TID two's value on a little quicker, or, you know, we get both of them on. TID five has a lot more value than TID two does, so getting that back on might be the priority. You know, getting that done a little faster than getting two back on right away, but, you know, depending on the circumstances and if we were to need any TIF capacity, we have some options out there. Any, any questions on these things or TIFs in general?
Board members, anything? I'm assuming we'll have this discussion around budget time.
Yeah.
Again?
Mm-hmm.
For what we want to be looking forward to.
Right.
Okay.
But yeah, I just thought, since the joint review board meeting had just recently happened, this might be a good time to pull some of this together.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have our public hearings. The first one we have is discuss and take action on certified survey map and reason and request for Brandon Andries for vacant lot adjacent to 5152 River Road, Towne Westport. And so, we're going to, Kevin, do you want to introduce?
Let me give a little introduction. This is currently a one-lot CSM on River Road. It's near the daycare, the country day school, near Riverview Drive, so it's, you know, purely a Westport issue, not a Wanakee issue. What they're proposing to do is split this into two single-family lots, and so there was a typo in the public hearing, so my recommendation is hold the public hearing tonight, then hold it open till the 20th, continue the public hearing, and then take action at the, at the next meeting.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing then, for anybody who would like to address on this issue. Julie, did anybody turn any slips around?
No.
Okay.
I would be curious to know, sorry, Anne Lewandowski, 103 West Third Street. I'd be curious to know how the lots will actually be divided. I'm sorry if that's in the map, if that's in the packet, I missed it, but I'd just be curious to know.
How those in the packet?
Yeah.
Oh, it's in the packet, yeah. There was some compromising that had to take place in terms of the road location and the shared driveway in order to accommodate some of the neighbors that are along it. Again, it's really not a, much of a Wanakee issue as it is a neighborhood issue in the Towne Westport, and their, their town board has recommended approval.
Okay, any other comments? Okay, then I'm going to close.
Hold it open.
Do we have any, we don't have any discussion then?
Well, you can't even, even though it's the public hearing, if you guys want to discuss, but if you want to wait to discuss at the next meeting, you certainly can, but yeah, I would hold it open.
Okay, so we'll just hold that open. Anybody have anything they want to comment on tonight? Okay, and let's move on to our next public hearing item, discuss and take action on a request to amend general development plan for Wanakee Business Park Phase Two, Lot 15, allowing daycare center for dogs to conduct certain business operations outside of property. Kevin?
Our planning commission spent some time on this, and initially had an initial consultation about doing this daycare center for dogs on a part, on a parcel in the, in the business park, and certainly there was support for it at the planning commission level. Rather than open it up to all the, the business park, the planning commission, let's just allow it on this particular lot, forget others that come forward, then we can make the changes to those lots as well. But the way this is currently written is that it'll allow the daycare operations only on this proposed lot.
Person went to a conditional use permit.
Could you repeat that?
So, the change would allow, if a conditional use permit is issued, it would allow the outdoor activity. So, I think what that, what that means is, the action that you take tonight is not going to allow this business to move forward. If you approve this, or this amendments to the general development plan, then the business is still going to have to come to the village planning commission to apply for a conditional use, use permit to operate the doggy daycare and associated vet clinic and kenneling, and then as part of the conditional use permit process, that's where the standards and the rules would be identified for any outdoor activities.
Okay. All right, then I'll open this up for public hearing. Julie, any letters or...
Nope, nothing.
Chris, I'd just say they did solicit support from the neighboring businesses, and I believe they got them all.
Okay, then I'll close the public hearing part. So, Kevin, that's what I was going to actually ask, was if any of the businesses had any objections. Are we setting any precedences for future?
Well, I think we approached this in an attempt not to do that. I mean, we've made, made this as narrow as we can, in part because my understanding is we do have the support of neighboring property owners for the business to operate with the understanding that there would be some business conducted outside, effectively the dogs having some time outside. But, you know, it is, it's only on this particular lot, and we did, you know, in light of the general rules that apply within the, the park where you can't operate outside, business outside, we did try to make it as narrow as possible so it wouldn't set a precedent. Can't, can't say that we won't be, have somebody else come forward in the future to maybe try to amend the GDP for a different lot, but I think what you're doing tonight is pretty narrow, assuming you approve it.
Okay, and with it being a CUP when it happened, when we go through that process, I'm assuming that if we all of a sudden have a lot of businesses come to say, this is bad, this is not good for ours, do we have the opportunity at that point to revoke that CUP, make sure?
Well, I think what we would, I think, I think one of the things that we've discussed at a staff level is, because it's going to be dogs, there's certain things that we're going to want to put as conditions within the, the CUP once they come forward, and certainly noise issues and odor issues and things of that nature would be in there. And for example, we, we've done a number of CUPS recently, and we kind of started the process of actually putting the standards in document that gets approved, and in each one of those documents, we always retain the ability to revisit the conditional use permit if we do get complaints by neighbors.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions, comments, or motions?
And so, just, there is, the ordinance is in, is in front of you, it's separate, and that's, that's what we'd be, if you're inclined to approve it, that's the document, because that, there was one change made by the planning commission and the document before you incorporate that change.
Okay. Do we have a motion or any other comments?
Well, I'm looking for the recommended motion, and I haven't found it, but certainly it's timely. I'm in the grand dog business, ah, thank you. I'm in, I have a lot of grand dogs, and I have to take them to these places, and they, the dogs seem to really look forward to going to them, and for some strange reason, they look forward to going home also, so. My motion is approve the amendment to the GDP for Lot 15, Wanakee Business Park Phase Two.
Okay, we've got a motion by Phil Williams. Second by Bill Ranham. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Chris.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, oh, okay. Motion passed. Okay, next we've got license permits. Julie, discuss and take action on operator license applications for Julie Steinle, Elah, Alejandra Perfetti, and Cassandra Allen.
Yeah, we're still catching up on some of our operator licenses, but these are, should be wrapping up soon. They have been included in your packet as submitted to the police department staff review. We would recommend approval, subject to successful completion of an approved responsible beverage server training course.
And?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Bill Ranham.
Second.
Second. Joe Zitzelsberger, any other comments? Call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, ayes have it. Under new business, we have discuss and take action on agreement for sanitary sewer extension of West, sorry, sanitary sewer extension to West of Highway Q.
This is an agreement between the village and the developer, which requires the developer then to extend the sewer from Simon Cressway to the other side of, of Q, so the, the west side of Q. The developer is responsible for all the costs, but a portion of this is, would be eligible for reimbursement through the TIF agreement, but that's not part of this agreement, that's already been decided. So, staff would recommend approval, subject to any modifications approved by the village engineer and village attorney. Just for a little bit of background, that crossing of Q, that's the new portion of, of Q, that'll be done with a, with a boring machine, so will not be closed for traffic, and the road will not be disturbed.
Board members, any questions for Kevin?
So, that's a this year thing, or is that a...
Yeah, it's this fall.
So, I'd look for a motion, if somebody, they wanted to...
I make a motion, we approve the agreement and authorize any changes approved by the village engineer and village attorney.
Motion by Phil Williams. Motion by Phil Oates. Second by Bill Random. Any other comments? Okay, I'll call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it.
Make a motion, we adjourn.
Motion by Phil Oates to adjourn.
You had your chance.
Second for Joe. That's a burger. All right, call the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Thanks, everyone.